Good evening, this is zoning board of appeals meeting. The agenda for tonight, September fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, is the first item is called "Order," which I will do right now, we call the meeting to order. And the second item is to review the minutes, approve the minutes of the August meeting, the financial report, and temporary appointments for our October meeting. I'll explain that later. New business at seven-ten, replacement, case number seventeen oh-two, replacement, replacing a large existing building at seven fifty-nine Main Street, Michael Young. And at seven-thirty, we have a new case, seventeen oh-three, appealed from the building inspector of fifty-two Christopher Road, Vincent Di Amato. And at quarter of eight, we will review and vote on seventeen oh-one Kevin Daki at thirty-seven Hammond Street, and then adjournment. So, we've all had a chance to read the minutes of August fifteenth, August eighteenth. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, I'll ask for motion for... I make a motion, will we accept the August eighteen minutes?
Second.
Motion's been made, seconded? Okay. To keep you up to date as to what our financial... Oh, yeah, we need to vote on that. Thank you. All who favor Boo, we remember it's sixty-five, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, financials. We have ninety-nine hundred dollars in filing fee account, there's two-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars in consultant revolving account, we have fifteen-hundred-and-forty-six dollars in the expense account, and seventy-six hundred dollars in petty cash. Okay. Got here temporary appointments. I'm going to be on vacation in October. My wife and I got invited to go with our daughter to the Grand Canyon. So, we decided I could do it. So, I want to appoint Bob Clu as chair for October meeting, and Donna as clerk. Not knowing whether Tom will be here or not. If Tom is not here, is here, he can do it. But in case he's not here.
He'll be clerk, I mean.
He'll be clerk if he's here, yeah.
Or chair, I don't, I mean, I'm...
No, I'm pointing you as chair.
Okay. All right, now, I didn't know whether you meant he'd be chair if he is here, or clerk if he's chair. No, okay, just for the record.
For the record. I'm pointing Bob Clu as chair, and Donna as clerk, if Tom is not here. Okay. You, Michael?
I am.
Okay. Just bear with me a minute.
Sure.
Case number seventeen oh-two, an application received from Michael Young requesting a special permit from the zoning board of appeals to replace and enlarge an existing building is now open. Secretary will be recording everything that's said, so if anybody has any questions, please speak loudly so that the clerk, the clerk can understand you and your name and address. Does any member of this board have any financial interest in this particular case?
None.
So, it has no conflict of interest. Okay, public notice of this hearing was advertised on Town Common August thirty-first, two thousand sixteen, and September second, two thousand sixteen, and reads as follows. The public hearing will be held at the Town Hall Annex thirty-nine Central Street on Thursday, September fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, at seven-ten P.M. to act on an application received August fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, from Michael Young. The applicant is requesting a special permit from the board to replace and enlarge an existing building under section five point two point one of the Valley's only bylaws. Property is located at seven fifty-nine Main Street, Valley, Mass. The property is in the coastal conservation district and is shown in the census map thirty-four, block seven. At the public hearing, members of the public may ask any questions and present evidence that supports either the approval or denial of this application. We have a letter from the conservation commission dated today. The town's special permit seventeen point oh-two at seven fifty-nine Main Street. May I, first, remember the zoning board of appeals conservation department has reviewed the application, so it's in office of all comments. Conservation and Mr. Young addressed an outstanding environmental violation that existed on this property part of Mr. Young's home. Mr. Young took his credit appropriately addressed and restored the area that it experienced on clear fire in nineteen eighty-eight. The conservation commission has reviewed the matter and determined that the area was properly restored and will be issuing letters stating the fact in the near future. Conservation Department knows that committing for development activities and demolition of existing structures mentioned, this application may be subject to review. An approval by the conservation commission under Wetlands Protection Act and the Town Wetlands Protection Bylaw. Conservation Department knows that the entire property pit will be within areas subject to coastal storm flooding, and may be in a FEMA special flood hazard zone. Therefore, proposed activity may be subject to the town's flood plan, district bylaw administered by the planning board. The submitted plans do not depict any regulated wetland resources, and there has not been an application submitted to the conservation commission to identify or denigrate those resource areas which are known to exist nearby and on the carpet. Therefore, if a proposal conforms to existing regulations, which should be noted, while not commenting specifically in favor or in opposition to an increased footprint, we would recommend that development proceeds, there would need to be provisions for addressing increased storm water runoff from the larger structure. Thank you for your consideration, please advise if I need to re-prepare my system. That's great, the conservation agent.
Is there a computer?
Don't let pictures of his watch.
Okay. Good evening, board members. For the record, Michael Young, seven fifty-nine Main Street. As you know, I'm before you this evening, seeking a special permit under section five dot two dot one, that the changes I wish to make will not be substantially more detrimental. I have provided you with plans, survey plans, building plans. Most recently this evening, there was a photo that I've staked out to what it would look like with the enlargement. I can answer any questions. This building, I call it a barn-like structure, it will be fitting in the look of Rowley. When you come from the Newbury side, it's the first thing you'll see coming into town. One door in the middle, twenty-four by twenty-four. It will be dry storage, no oil tanks, no septic, no water. The only utility will be electricity, which was previously at the site but not presently. And it will store just your traditional home goods, if you will. I live in Newburyport, and for the last five years, I've rented two storage units in Salisbury to keep our things there, and I'd like to get them to a more permanent spot, not owning a garage, so cadews, kayaks, and other things would be stored there. It is dry storage. All right, I got some pictures here for you, showing where you're going to enlarge the... I can't, there's a stake, if you turn back a page, or both pages, this is, that's the stake right there. So, this building across the front is approximately fifteen-three, and so it would increase eight feet and eight feet eight, if you will, to that state. In the back, then it's not a picture in the back, but the building is eighteen feet, going deeper, eighteen-four, and so I'm looking for five feet eight, eight inches off the back. I had the conservation officer on the property, Mr. Bazelak. So, you want to, you want to move, you want to add this way? Yes. What, sixty? Just under six feet, excuse me, just under nine feet, eight feet eight inches, approximately. Okay, and you want to go that way? Approximately five feet eight inches.
He's going to tear down that building.
The tree's not...
Mr. Bazelak said there's potentially one tree, and he said that he may ask me to replant one tree. He was on the property with me after I had staked it out, and he was concerned about the footage around, which I meet the footage, which was twenty-five feet, I have more than twenty-five feet to enmashling around the building.
If anybody's not familiar with this, this is across from the old, used to be a barroom there on Route one, right across the street. They made it a big old brown house there. It's a little shack on the process rate where he is, you know. Well, not one of the barrooms, I know. No, far before your time.
And Mr. Chairman, in the letter...
When you go to the bridge coming from Newbury, it's the first little old house, or not a house, a shack, that had a fence with a whole bunch of junk in it and everything.
And Mr. Chairman, in the letter that you read to the board at the beginning from Mr. Bazelak, when I purchased that property, I sought out different departments, and they had no issues with that property, and then a letter was found, as Mr. Bazelak said, in from nineteen eighty-eight, almost thirty years ago. And he and I had to determine what the issue was, and once he did, he went to the conservation commission and got approval for me to remove, and I have since reseated and everything that he said to clean up that issue that was thirty years ago. And so that has been done on that property as well, as well as just stated, there was all kinds of junk on that property, and it's been cleaned up to what you see today. My plan is to take down the fence, the remaining part of the fence that's there and leave it open. I think it will look much better with a visual all out through across the mosh.
I agree.
Yes, yeah, and that's my plan. It's only there now maybe for a bit of security, but I plan on taking that down. Portions of it have already been taken down, but I will remove some remaining up. This is your plans here? Yes. And you can see the building itself?
Is this going to have a permanent foundation?
Yes, that's my plan, have a permanent foundation. That is, that is the point in question, I think, that Mr. Bazelak is referring to. My conversations with him, and most recently with Kurt Baker, stem from what I may have to do because of the flood plan. And he is looking into that, Mr. Bazelak, because I'm under the category of an accessory building. Since it's not residential, it falls in the category of garage and shed, and he's trying to find those requirements. And I'm not familiar enough with the process, but I understand, depending on what happens here this evening, I still have to go before the planning board with Mr. Baker, and I still have to go before conservation with Mr. Bazelak. And I have been, I purchased this property in October fourteen, there were other things that have kept me from progressing to where we are today, but I understand that I still have to meet the requirements in whatever they are, which I have, and I'm on the agenda meeting for October twelfth with the planning board. You go to cement floor? Yes, unless told otherwise, that's my plan. There was talk from Mr. Bazelak that there'd have to be some type of flow through, where if that area flooded, the water would be able to fall through, and that's the only conversation, but he was going to look at the FEMA regulations in regards to that. And obviously, when I go before him or the planning board, those would be the things that, in order to get any final permitting, I'd have to appeal to. Do you have a plan showing this? Okay, that's, that's okay. There is a survey there, it shows the previous building and where the new building would overlay. Any questions?
Just, just, go ahead. I'm sorry, yes, okay.
Go ahead.
You mentioned storage.
Yes.
And you mentioned a couple of things, and then you said, "and others," and et cetera.
I'm fifty-five years old, everything you acquire in the course of a lifetime, from my wife's Christmas ornaments to, certainly, I was questioning, we spoke, I think it was Monday or Tuesday, because the fire chief had some questions about hazardous material. I don't own any hazardous material, to my knowledge. I could get some of these other questions, would there be an office in there? No, there's not going to be an office in there. You might help me, I don't even know all the questions, but there were...
No running water.
All right, there's no running water, there's no septic, there's no oil tanks, the only utility would be electricity.
Okay, for the record?
Yes.
So, we can say that, you know, we...
Absolutely.
Propane?
No.
Oil, petroleum products?
If there would be any, it would be something that you put in your car or your lawnmower, but not of any type of tanks for oil, no.
Okay.
Would you be storing a lawnmower? I don't think so, because I don't have any lawnmower over there, and I don't have any on in Newburyport, so I would say no, but I don't want to mislead anybody, I don't, I don't own a lawnmower, so. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman. I don't own a lawnmower, no.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
For the record, this is one, two, three, four, five, Donna is serving on this case.
I haven't heard any questions.
Anybody else?
No. All right, I feel you ready to vote.
I want a motion.
You want to make a motion?
I want a motion to accept the application, subject to review by appropriate town committees, particularly conservation and money board.
One second, Mr. Chairman. Can you make a second?
The conditions are to comply with conservation plan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Are you better?
Yep.
Public hearing case number seventeen point oh-three, an application received from Vincent Di Amato requesting an appeal to the zoning board of appeals for the decision from the inspected buildings is now open. And there's nobody here to talk in favor or against him, so I will continue on here. Notice of this application was posted in the Town Hall, sent to a certified list of parties in interest, and was published in the Town Common on August thirty-first and September seventh, and reads as follows. Case number seventeen point oh-three, public hearing be held at the Town Hall Annex thirty-nine Central Street on Thursday, September fifteenth, at seven thirty P.M. to act on an application received August seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, from Vincent Di Amato Jr. An applicant has requested an appeal from the board of appeals to review a decision made by the inspected building. The property is located at fifty-two Christopher Road, Valley, Mass. The property is in the Alpine District and is shown in the census map eight block nineteen block four. At public hearing, members of the public may speak and ask questions and present evidence that supports either the approval or denial of this petition. We have a couple of letters here.
Mr. Chairman, that's another one, Town Common that was delivered this evening.
Oh, okay, thank you. Is any, okay, I'm going to point Donna to sit in on this case. Okay, I've got three or four letters here that I want to read first. Okay. First letter we have is from the fire department, and we see the above-mentioned application, and no comments or questions or concerns of this application. It's nice to know that these departments are responding for our requests. Wanted from the planning board, here is my review comments in regards to case number seventeen oh-three for an existing shed located fifty-two forty-six Christopher Road, which was determined by the building inspector to be noncompliant with the... Was due to be covered by the building inspector, not compliant with the OD zoning district, minimum front setback of fifty feet. One, the floodplain overlay district portion of the subject property has areas located in the floodplain area overlay district. The attached exhibit does not depict the floodplain boundary, and it's not clear where the structure is located in relation to that boundary. The applicant should include this boundary on the exhibit in order to determine if the applicant... If the structure is to be located in a flooded, displaced floodplain area overlay district. If the applicant does determine the shed is located within the floodplain overlay district, then a floodplain special permit by the Planning Board pursuant to, is only by law, section four point ten point one, will be required. Municipal Water Supply Overlay District, the subject property is located in the Municipal Water Supply Overlay District. The ZB should determine if a MWSPD special permit will be required, and should be at a minimum confirmed, confirm, if the applicant had no hazardous substances prohibited by the CBL. Section four point eleven point three point one will be stored in accessory shed. Do you by any chance have any mail from Vincent Di Amato? If so, I will pull him a copy, otherwise I'll send it to the other man. Uh, this is from the Health Department. Uh, the applicant at fifty-two Christopher Road has been reviewed, the building is not cloned. There is no structure on this property that is considered habitable. Void of held case, no comments on the application. This is from the Board of Select, men of Board of Select, and we yield the planning, zoning, board of appeals application, filed against Vincent Di Amato Jr. for appeal for the decision made by the building inspector, the property of fifty-two Christopher Road, that is September twelfth, two thousand sixteen, even. They have no comment on the application. Last one is from the Town of Rowley Conservation Commission. Title of the ZB, eighteen point oh three, forty-six, fifty-two Christopher Road, map eight cross nineteen block four, Vincent and Carolyn Di Amato. Number one, Conservation Department in the news. Amato has previously worked through a permitting scenario regarding the placement of this shed, which is subject to this proceeding. Two, commission during my period permitting review did not have knowledge, nor was made aware of the zoning requirements for setback from the public way. Three, the Conservation Department notes that relocation of the shed may require a permit application submittal. The adjacent border vegetated wetlands are protected by a twenty-five foot no cut, no disturbed zone, which needs to be respected if any relocation of the shed. Thank you for your consideration. Please, please, me from the area for your assistance. Okay, Vincent. Tell us what's happened and why and so forth, and anything you can tell us.
All right, um, I'm Vincent Di Amato, forty-six Christopher Road, this is for fifty-two Christopher Road. Um, I got a question on one of the letters you got, I didn't hear the whole thing from the Planning Board, if I can get a copy of it. But I received a letter back in July from the building inspector. I had a complaint about the shed. As you saw with the conservation, I mean, I didn't know the setback. I wasn't informed at the time when I, you know, I'd mentioned I was placing the shed. It is, the back corner of it is at the twenty-five foot mark, so it is as far back as we could put it. The only other thing I can do, I have to talk with Mr. Bazlik a couple weeks ago, is move it over towards the middle of the yard, twenty-five to thirty feet, and then move it back fifteen feet. As of right now, it's kind of set back behind the fence, against the woods, not really seen. If I move it out in the middle of the yard, it's going to be a major eyesore. Um, I spoke with the neighbor who filed the complaint, and I guess the shed as it is now is an eyesore. So I can just imagine it'll be even worse if I move it to the middle of my yard. So I'm just here to see if I can get a, it's a variance or a special permit, I'm not sure what it's called, just to leave the shed where it is, or if I have to move it.
So if you move it, you're going to have, uh...
I mean, I have pictures of where it is now and where it can be moved. You know, it's sitting on the back where, you know, retaining all they put up, so it's... And for the back, I get a rebuilt tang walls, I do. For the conservation, I'll have, you know, Mr. Bazlik come back and-
Is, uh, is this shed on a cement slab?
No. It was a prefab that they placed on, um, I believe patio blocks, cinder blocks.
Okay, alright, okay. So it can be moved easily? Relative?
Yeah, I mean, probably a flat, they could pick it up and move it.
Yeah, okay. Alright. Did, when you talked to your neighbor and told, did you tell him where you would have to move it? In order to be-
Uh, he was very turned off talking to me, so I, I didn't want-
So you didn't get anywhere?
Yeah, I didn't want to cause many worries, I, I...
What do we got there?
Just kind of asked him what, but the problem was.
Can you just go over the addresses again one more time?
I live at forty-six.
You live at forty-six?
The property's right next door, it's fifty-two.
You want both of them?
Yes. I purchased the other one, um, four years ago. I think I put the shed up right after that.
The neighbor that is across the street, then, like, what you said?
Uh, Robert Pagel, Pagel. I mean, the only neighbor that can actually see the shed, you know, where it sits, is his neighbor.
You couldn't talk to him about doing any screening or anything?
I mean, like I said, I got pictures of it now, from his driveway, from his house, and you can't see the shed.
Oh.
Um, it's behind...
Well, isn't this the road right here, or this? And if you drive by, you can see it, right?
Oh, yes, if you drive by, it's not-
Like, this is the roadway here.
Correct.
Right, okay. Yeah, I drove by it the other day.
Yeah.
I did too. And his house was right on the other side of the street, right here?
Uh, no, that would be, um, Dennis Roy.
Okay.
Uh, his house is, if I can show you, I got a couple better pictures here. I had my wife walk coming down the street, taking pictures. So this is from the corner of his lot, and this is from his driveway.
Is that from the camper?
Yes. The parking area was originally put in for the motorhome.
So you parked the camper down there?
Yes.
Next door?
Yes. So essentially, if, you know, doing the measurements for the wetlands, if it had to be relocated, it would actually sit-
Behind where the camper is?
Uh, further than that, it would be more towards the, behind the trailer.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, the corner of it, the side of it would be the side of the trailer. To get the actual thirteen feet.
Am I the only person here from the neighborhood?
Yep.
Oh, I wonder why?
Not really sure.
Do you think they probably couldn't find their way here? This is fascinating.
And who are you, ma'am?
I'm in a butter.
Which one?
Kathleen Garis, sixty-six. And before this gentleman put his building up, I had already asked somebody from the Conservation Commission to find out if it was okay, if he was far enough away from the wetlands, and/or the, not the wetlands, the-
The gully? Gully, for the storm drains.
Not the gully.
Which is easy.
Hey, folks, folks, you can't talk to each other, you got to talk to the chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You have to address the chair when you recognize this.
I'm sorry, okay. I kind of figured he wasn't far enough away from the, uh, gully. The, um-
Wetlands.
It's not even a wetland thing, it's a, uh-
No cuts on?
Whatever. And, uh, the person that I spoke with said, oh, I guess he's fine, somebody said he was okay. So, now begin, what, what are we addressing here, though?
Visitation wetland, bordering visitation land.
Oh, alright, so it's the wetland thing, so many feet from the wetland. How many did you build? Uh-oh, how many did he build?
What was that?
How many feet from the, uh-
This is the wetland? I think what she's asking is why we're here, my correctance is asking me saying that?
I don't even know, that's what I thought.
Okay, question, are you for this or against?
It doesn't matter, I'm asking you. Questions, would you please answer them first?
What he's here for is, he's in violation of zoning. It's supposed to be sixty, fifty feet from the street.
Oh, five oh, from the street?
From the street.
So it has nothing to do with the-
Wetlands or anything else?
Oh, you're kidding?
This is not the Conservation Commission.
Mm-hmm, no, I know, it's a CBA, thank you.
But we're, we don't, we don't control wetlands, we, we're the zoning violator.
And, okay, so how many feet is the setback supposed to be?
Fifty feet. Fifty feet.
Five oh?
Five oh.
And how many is the building?
I believe it's, I believe it's-
Thirty-seven? Thirty-seven?
Yes.
Thirty-seven.
Okay, so there's no violation with the, uh-
There's, there is, if he moves it, it may be.
He's not going to move it, it's already there. So what is he, thirteen feet in violation?
Yeah.
Correct?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
So would you, you would-
Do I have a problem with that?
You have a problem with that?
No, I don't. No, I don't.
You have a-
I have a problem if he were too close to the... What's the word I want, I can't even-
It's the storm drain.
Right, right.
The storm drain flows into the woods, right, it's an easement, it's a-
An easement, that's the word I wanted, easement. He's okay with the easement, he's far enough away from the easement, correct?
I don't know. Conservation, Conservation-
I, I have a-
Associate of Conservation Department- Ma'am, that's a different board. Don't, don't. Right, this is, we're just dealing with zoning, okay, he's going to have to go-
Thirteen feet back? No, wait a minute, how many?
We can, we can, we can allow him to keep it where it is, and it may not, and it may not be any problem.
Okay.
But he may have to, where this has arisen, or a complaint has been filed, I guess that he may have to go back to the Conservation Commission to be sure that it's, it's alright.
So this is another norm, where somebody, did, did this individual get a permit to put this building in?
Yes, he did.
Oh, he did, okay, so why, why is it denied now?
I believe he did.
It's not required. It's under two hundred square feet.
Okay.
Pardon me?
It's not required, that's right, you're absolutely right.
It's not required, why?
If under two hundred square feet.
The building?
Correctly.
And what is that, how many, by how many, could you put that in square footage for me?
Ten by twenty.
Ten by twenty?
Right.
So if you put up a ten by twenty, you don't need to get a permit?
Right, if it's not on a, as long as it's not on a permanent foundation. If it's on a permanent foundation, he has to have a permit.
Okay.
That's a building permit.
Okay.
Building permit.
Okay, okay. So why is this being denied?
Haven't decided yet.
It hasn't been, we haven't decided, nothing's been denied.
Only because you're so many, you're, you're, you're how many feet from the street?
Fifty, he's not fifty feet.
Okay, okay.
He's not supposed to have it where it is, under the zoning bylaw.
Okay, so you need to be-
So the question is, he wants to get special permission to get an exemption from that fifty feet, that's what he's asking.
I understand, okay. And you know something, since nobody's here, I could care less. He's already put it up, it's a beautiful building, and I don't have a problem with it.
Okay.
Of course, I'm here in the neighborhood.
And what, what was your name?
Kathleen Garis, sixty-six, Christopher Road, Rowley, I don't have a problem with it. I was only worried about his setback from the, um, wetlands there. That's the only thing I was concerned with.
His problem is that apparently he has, he's caught between wetlands jurisdiction that comes from one end, and zoning that comes from the other. And he can't comply with both, is that, do I understand that? Yeah, if he moves the shed, then he's got a problem. Okay, so- He has a problem with the- He's got a zoning restriction, he's got a zoning problem where he is, and if he goes closer to the wetlands, he's got a wetlands problem. So somebody's got to make a decision, and then anybody who's in the neighborhood can appeal that and say, oh, no, you can't do that, so somebody has to make a decision as to whether or not he's going to be allowed to either leave it where it is, which violates the zoning law, or move it closer to the wetlands, which is going to violate the wetlands bylaw.
I understand, okay.
That, that's-
So actually, where he put it was probably a good place.
Could be.
And we should probably leave it there. And since nobody else has bothered to show up, I don't have a problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I originally did, but, um, it works out.
Alright, thank you.
Good. Good. All in favor?
For, for the record, for the record, ma'am, the alternative is, we could say you can't have anything there, because you can't violate both, so get it out of there.
Yeah, you know what?
That's, I, no, no, I just want to put that on the record, that's, it, it, in other words, what you said was, one of the other, aren't the only alternative, only two alternatives.
I have one more thing to say, my husband and I have done a lot of building in our home. We've paid fortune in building, uh, whatever you call it, uh, fees, electrical fees and, and plumbing fees. And did you originally get a building permit to do this?
He didn't, he didn't need one.
Did he, I'm sorry?
He didn't need one, that's what we went over before.
Oh, alright.
That's what he didn't need, was a building permit.
Well, you know, you need to do it right, and he should have done it right from the beginning, but, no problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Boy, huh, too bad we had to go through this. Okay, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
Just looking at the, uh, request for zoning enforcement that this gentleman filed.
I'm sorry?
He says it's less than thirty-seven feet. Is the actual distance from the street thirty-seven feet, you're saying thirty-seven feet?
That's what I measured.
That's you measuring, are you saying it's less? He's not here, but that's his complaint.
Right, it's, it's a forty by forty area that starts at the sidewalk and then it's a ten by fourteen shed, so it's ten feet wide, but the sidewalk is, uh, nine and a half feet from the sidewalk to the street.
Can I ask a question here?
Okay.
Isn't Christopher Road not accepted by the town? So your measurement would really come from the town and the road?
Um, there's, I, I don't wanna get myself in trouble here, but that property actually owned the whole road in front of it, to the other side, but the town has, I believe, taken over that road.
Oh, they have?
At this point.
Didn't we have that case on the ZBA? On the Fannie B. that, uh...
Uh, yes, but that, that has the particular person who had never signed off, has finally signed off, or else they have moved. I don't know what the situation is, but I believe Christopher Road has been accepted by the town.
That was my understanding last time. 'Cause I know that property, the owners before me had to sign off the whole section of street in front of that property.
Now, was that shed there at, at that time? Before the town accepted the road?
You, um, you guys will know better, you know, the date that it got accepted. That shed was put in in two thousand thirteen, I believe, in September or August.
Okay, I thought it was accepted in either two thousand fourteen or two thousand fifteen.
It's been recent.
It's not recent, no.
It's been very recent.
Just on the list. This was the return to compliance from the conservation dated October two thousand thirteen and this was after having signed off the shed, boundaries and all the buffer zones and everything. And that's where the shed landed, in, um, this is France's measurements.
So you complied, you complied with conservation?
Correct.
At that time?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? Any questions? His neighbor can't, can't see the shed because the campers are right.
Their motorhome is gone for two weeks in the winter, my parents take it, I take it for a week and, and when I happened to get the notice in July, I had it with me. We were waiting for, for the weekend, but other than that, that's where it's parked.
Is this the lot there? I'm just trying to put everything together. Well, the building inspector says that here's a copy of the plan you submitted to the Conservation Commission. Pay out, get the shed on it.
Eight nineteen four.
The shed is not a part of the plan, it's like something...
I, I'm not sure, I, I didn't get to meet with, uh, Kenny. He was out of the office a couple times, I stopped in because I was...
He lives here.
When I originally drew up the plan, I was in the past, Brent told me to just draw him up real quick.
That's it?
Yes.
You live, you live on, uh, you live at ninety, forty-six?
Correct.
Okay, so that's his house, this is the lot.
Eight nineteen four.
Where it's located on his apartment. Is there a different plan that they're talking about?
Um, well, that's what I was just explaining, was I actually drew it because Brent told me it wasn't as important, it was just to get a rough idea where it was.
Eight nineteen four?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's here.
And he lives next door.
This, this was the sketch. So it was forty feet from the sidewalk, forty feet from the edge of the, um, storm drain.
This was the original sketch?
That was what I drew.
So is that in fact the placement today?
Yes, it hasn't moved.
That's what you did, or looking?
Correct.
This is a rough drawn plan.
Yeah, I, I never got a, um, when I, when I went for the conservation, he told me just it had to be a, you know, he, he came out and remeasured everything, Brent, but, um...
So complies with the conservation requirements?
Right, it's okay.
Yeah. Yeah, but you're saying if he moves it, then he has a problem.
Sure, sure.
Yeah, 'cause this back corner, right here, is twenty-five feet as it sits.
That's what's hard to tell from this?
Yeah, Brent had a big page, you know, like when we see a couple weeks ago. I got a whole bunch of copies of the little ones, but it doesn't really show much.
So, as I, as I said earlier, as I understand it, the question is, you're either in violation of zoning or wetlands.
Yes.
I mean, now you're caught between those two, is that, or, or is there a way you could, you could avoid that and be in compliance with both?
Yes.
We give him the relief. And they go where it is.
No, 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 no. 'Cause, 'cause he's in violation right now.
He's in violation where it is now. Okay, under zoning. He can move it, uh, to the middle of the lot, basically.
Right. Which, I mean, again, I don't know how true it was when he told me it was an eyesore, but to put in the middle of the lot, it will be in front of Mr. Paragel's house.
Yeah, the objection is that it's an eyesore by the, by the complainant here. So to move it through the middle of the building, the lot, it's just...
It'll make it worse.
But it's gonna be a complaint.
I also...
Well, actually, it's not a complaint, it's, it's the building inspector said you're in violation 'cause you're less than fifty feet from the front.
Well, he received a complaint.
Right, somebody complained, okay, but that's, that's not the complaint here. The complaint, the, the, we're, what we got is an appeal from the zoning enforcement officer. Says you're less than fifty feet from the frontage, and he is. Okay, so... There, there's no question, he's, he's in, he's in violation of the zoning bylaw. So now he needs relief for us to say he, it's okay to be less than fifty feet for some reason. Right?
Okay, yeah, one, one reason I would think would be if he moved it, he's gonna be in, in problems with, right, with the wetland.
That's what I'm asking, is that, although the, are those the only two alternatives? You're in violation of one or the other?
Right. The wetland, I'll make it a worse, worse sight by putting it in front of the house so that the person that complained is gonna have a better view looking at it.
Well...
Well, that's all, so I haven't done any, um, I haven't had Brent come back to the property and take measurements, this was in his office from the old plans we had. So he, he would still have to come back, take measurements and find out where we can set it back thirteen feet.
Well, he's got more still to add to it.
Well, that's where it is now, it definitely can't go back.
Right.
He's just not sure how far, he thinks about thirty feet. If we move it, then we can go back to thirteen because the wetlands, if, if you look, uh, they show it by day, actually get closer into the property before they go back out. I think he has that a one.
Because what I'm, what I'm asking is, if you can move it to a place where you're not in violation of the wetlands by law and you're not in violation of zoning, then nobody can, nobody can give you a hard time or appeal it or anything.
Well, yeah, legally they couldn't give me a hard time, but, I mean...
You have a place, you could do that?
I'm sure I could find one. I mean, the yards, it's a slope, so I have to build a retaining wall and, you know, move the driveway along with the shed.
But anything we do is subject to appeal from people that don't like it. If you, if you put it in a spot that, not in violation of zoning, nobody can appeal that. If you put it on a spot that's not in violation of the wetlands by law, nobody can appeal that. You're protected, it may cost you a little money, but you gotta think about that because we just make a decision and then, you know, people that don't like it can do what they do. You have a, you, you may, I don't know, depending on the measurements, you may have a way to protect yourself by, you know, siding it in some place that, that...
Yeah.
Your, your site...
That would be your best bet overall, like you're saying, like, saying, you know, that nobody can touch you.
Now, if on the other hand, you cannot do it and you're, you're stuck between violating one or the other, we can make a decision.
Okay.
I mean, you get, have I, is that clear?
Yeah, no, I understand, it's just really, I mean, because of where the wetlands is, it's, it's to put a ten by fourteen shed smacked in the middle of my yard. I mean, it's just, it's, it doesn't make sense to get rid of it, does it?
Except you got neighbors that may say, you know, "We want the zoning bylaw enforced."
Well, that's right, but then, I mean, not that they could enforce anything, because, no, I'm saying if, if I'm, if I'm clear with you guys, clear with the wetlands, they can't enforce anything.
No, even if we tell you, you can do it, they can appeal our decision?
No, I understand, I'm saying if I move it to the fifty feet for you guys.
Yeah, yeah.
And then for the twenty-five for the wetlands, they could still complain, nothing can uphold, but now all of a sudden I become the, you know, the black sheep of the neighborhood.
Not really, you're not really, you're doing it by law.
Well, I'm not sure, 'cause I'm not sure what his actual complaints, you know, why he's coming after me three years after it's been there. So I'm not sure what's next on his list after I...
Well, we, we can only go by the law and we, we have to explore these alternatives.
Okay.
But he can also assume the risk of the appeal, I mean, that's another, that's an option, but we'd have to, we'd have to discuss that.
Do we have a copy of the, of the, uh...
Yes, here.
Well, we have Mr. Ward's, uh...
We actually have the enforcement, this is the complaint.
Way in the back. Blue the copy of the, so... So, oh, here it is. Isn't that it? I'm going, no. No.
It's this one, isn't it?
Yeah. This is it.
It's a dawned, you know?
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, it's, it's difficult to read, I'm trying to...
Do you want to take this picture, sir?
Yes.
Can I make a copy? Can I make a copy?
Yeah.
And you wanna take these pictures back, please?
Um, I have copies of them.
I can keep these?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, that's just a copy of my... Yeah.
So it shows the wetlands a little bit better than, than that one, so...
Okay, we don't have a copy of the, of the complaint.
Yeah, she said we could do it.
Last page. She wanted papers.
Well, but if, if, if the zoning enforcement officer has already ruled that it's a violation, I don't think we need to complain to him.
This is the complaint, correct?
No.
How does it say what you have?
Is that violation for conservation? No, no, not conservation. No, the zoning enforcement officer says you're in violation of the zoning by law because you're within fifty feet, that's a, that's an appeal from his decision. He may have acted on a complaint to him, but we don't need to complain to him.
I understand.
Because we're only, we're only acting on the...
Yeah, what I, what I understood and it's hearsay, so I...
Right.
That the major complaint was was that...
Well, can I just, I mean, he's just saying he's in receipt of a written zoning complaint, so he...
Okay, but that's all, all that is, is what started him. That's, that's why he acted and you're appealing his act. You're not appealing what started him doing, why he acted.
There's a complaint. Yeah, you have a ticket. Zoning violation, shed not fifty feet from the street. Electricity in shed, no permitted access. No electrical permit. No electrical permit.
Does he need an electric permit? No.
We have real trouble, the electric, I don't expect it to...
Oh, I know that guy.
You're in trouble.
I, I checked in on that.
Double fee. No, I, I, I had understood that what initiated it was, was that you have a light on the shed that comes on and off every time somebody comes or comes to eat.
Sure, I fixed that. It was, it was broken, so it was just coming on constantly. Um, I shined it down. I don't, again, the TSA, I don't know if that was the initial complaint, but I don't know. But I had put that in for a security light because, um, a few years ago, we caught someone wandering around the woods behind shed. So I put motion there, just to deter people. So... But again, I mean, if that was the problem, I could've just taken the light down. But I, I'd come back from a trip and got a notice in the mail.
Yeah.
All right. Now, can I just, can I just say one more thing? I was looking over the, the six one, three one, that I'm in violation of and it states, you know, "Nothing other than fences, walks, public, private utilities, utility lines, sectors, laws, supplies and driveways shall be built on any lot near the fifty feet." So if this was a prefabricated shed, it was built in place? Does that make a difference?
No, no, it's a, it's a structure.
Right, no, I understand.
Doesn't matter if it's built off premises or, you can pre-fab a house off and put it on, does that mean it wasn't?
Well, I'm just saying, that's just what the rules were stating. I mean, I understand what, what they're going for, it's just, I'm just trying to find a way to spend lots of money moving the shed to, to make it a nice floor.
Almost though...
But now let me ask you, and this is just one more thing. It's two separate properties. If I move it over, I'm gonna be fifteen feet between my properties. Does that matter?
Yeah.
So now it's, now I'm stuck between my two properties with the shed, I can't.
We can talk both sides, that's...
The side with the fifteen feet.
Very close to your property.
Right, well, that, that was my next question, I mean, I know I own both properties, but they are two separate properties and I know that thing stays fifteen feet from the side property also. Which puts me in another predicament.
Except getting a permit for an exemption from that sideline, where you're the owner of both, would, would seem to be a pretty easy thing.
Well, but it's still something someone could complain about 'cause it's still against the zoning law.
Well, they can make, people can make you jump through the hoops. I'm just saying, if that's your concern, you gotta think, well, what's the likelihood that if, if I own both and somebody's gonna, you know, actually...
This guy seemed to go through a lot of paperwork and a lot of the town offices to get the information he needed to come after me, so...
All right, then, then, in that event, you gotta, you gotta think about exactly what we were saying before about moving it to a place where nobody can complain.
It doesn't, it doesn't...
It really isn't.
No, he didn't say it. No, 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 this fifteen set offset it, it's different. He can't, he cannot place it because of the two lots and it's gonna be a violation in a way.
Can you see it on here, sir?
It's all here.
I thought he said he had a place to put it in.
Well, no, I just thought of the fact that my two property... Well, no, I just thought of the fact that my two property lines.
Talking about the wetlands.
Right, the wetlands.
Right, but my two property lines are in the middle of the yard.
Property line is here. I don't know what the distance is. It doesn't say, but.
Is that the side, is that the sideline?
The sideline.
Huh?
Yes.
Fifteen feet.
Oh, so he's gotta be, you gotta be fifteen feet off that?
He can comply. Even if, if the conservation officer goes out there and measures.
The property, the property it's on extends beyond.
It's gonna be a violation of zoning. I mean, admittedly, come here.
Oh, even a wetland's gonna be a problem back there? That you were talking about where you wanted to put it?
No, no, no. I'm thinking where I can put it. I, I just thought of while I was here is, is my, my property lines are in the middle of the yard. Like, but, you know, it looks like my front yard. It's, the property line runs down, down the middle. So if I was to move it to where I'd be away from the wetlands and away from the fifty feet from the street, I'm gonna be within fifteen feet of my property line.
Okay, well, we can.
What about the other side? Can you?
Special permit now.
That's the, and easement.
And not move it.
Oh, you're talking inside of the house.
It's appealable either way.
No, 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 I don't, I don't think so. I think that he can move it to the, it's closer to your lot line now, right?
No. Right now, it's, it's closer to the easement, which is forty feet from my lot line or fifty feet from my other.
Okay, forget the easement for the moment.
Well, it's on, it's the, my property line's on the other side of the easement. That's why I was using as a reference.
Property line's over here.
Oh, the easement. You got an easement going down.
Right, so right now, on the edge of that, which the property line is like a hundred feet from the shed, but it's all wetlands because it's the drainage. If I go the other way, my property, you know, between the two properties is kind of right in the middle of the yard. Honestly, it's what I thought I owned when I bought the first lot, but I was wrong.
This is his house.
That's correct. That's the property line in this property.
Okay.
Between the two properties.
So if he moves his back over here, he's gonna be, he's gonna be in violation of this property line.
Sideline. And the green line's the easement? Is that the idea?
No, the green line's just the wet line, the wetlands.
Okay.
This is the no cut zone.
And how, I'm sorry, you're, what are you, thirty?
Thirty-seven feet from the street.
So you can't just go back thirteen feet?
At the back corner of the shed as it sits is twenty-five feet from the point, like it is, like right on the mark.
This is the closest, right here?
Yeah, it sits on the retaining wall, like on the back of the, back of the shed is on the retaining wall.
You're twenty-five feet from the wetlands?
Yes.
And you're thirteen feet in violation?
Yes.
So you can go back twelve feet and be in compliance?
Twenty-five feet is the mark.
He's gone, he's back as far as he can go. This is the, this is, this is the wetlands. He's gotta be twenty-five feet from the wetland.
Okay, okay.
Which it gets a little better over here, but then he's getting closer to that property line.
I see, okay. Because to my mind, the clearer it is that he can't do anything, the easier it is for us to, to give him some relief. Because if he, if he has alternatives that don't require us to act, then he should exercise those first. But if, if none of his alternatives comply, then maybe we do have to act or maybe we should act. Does that make sense?
That's how I understand it.
I think we have to act. I don't think he has a choice.
Yeah, that, that, that's what I'm trying to figure out is, does he, does he have something to do rather than come here, but maybe not.
No, that's what I'm saying.
In either case, it's appealable. Something I must appeal to defend.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, no, of course. That's his.
It does not appear.
No, that's not our problem. That's.
No, right.
It does not appear there's a remedy from, from the violation.
Now, can I just ask if, if it does get appealed, what, what is the process with that now? Same thing.
Do you want to go through that?
You wouldn't have to do anything. You just have to defend what you got.
Okay, all right.
Because if he, if he appealed it, he'd have to appeal to Superior Court.
Okay.
He wouldn't appeal it to us.
Okay.
He would go to Superior Court. He'd take it to court. It's what it boils down to. Take us to court.
I won't do that. But I mean, it's, it's, I, I seem to be, not that I picked the perfect spot for it, I mean, but it, it seems, it seems to be tough either way. And honestly, when I placed it, I did not know about the fifty feet. I come from a, a town where, a city where, you know, lots aren't this big and it's only the ten feet. You know, and, and I, I figured I'm more than triple that.
It took the central lights on too.
Okay.
That might be a big factor, I don't know. Going up and on, that would drive me crazy.
I mean, it's more big trucks now that come by, but I mean, maybe I just put a smaller bulb in to shine it on the doors. Is that all right? They have pretty big bulbs in there. I gotta get an electrical permit first, though, it's.
Yeah, I'd have your lights shining down.
Okay. I'll put a small bulb in. I mean, right now, they're, they're, um, it's equivalent to like a hundred watt LED or something, so it's pretty bright.
You can be able to adjust the curtain where it shines.
Yeah, like, I turn a bulb down. They, they got big shades on. I mean, right now, it's, it's facing at the ground. So, and then I'll put smaller lamps in it.
Okay. I think we'd be closer on the bush.
Do you like a motion?
Yeah.
You want a motion? I hear the motion. Mr. Chairman, in view of the evidence, it appears to me that the applicant has almost no use of this lot except as he's already used it. And I would move that we allow the application as requested subject to reasonable lighting restrictions. That's all I can do.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay.
I think we have to end something called the Conservation Commission Reviewing, because he was gonna go out there.
No, we don't have any restriction on the con, in other words, it's gotta be subject to cons con approval. That's, we, we can't control that.
Yeah, that's the appliance that are right there.
You know, we're only controlling zoning.
Very good.
I mean, it's, it's always subject to the approval of other jurisdictions too.
I understand.
That's the most like a meeting of the planning board also, right?
Uh, this is the first I've heard of that. I, I haven't heard anything other than that letter you just read. And I wasn't even sure what it meant. I, I only got a few words of it.
He's going to be sending it to you.
Okay. Did you, what, what was it about? I, I didn't, uh.
His, his department memo.
Oh, oh, you've got Brett's department.
Kurt.
Oh, Kurt, correct?
Kurt, yeah, two columns, two paragraphs. But he talks about the wetlands. And I asked him to talk about that.
Okay, we have a motion to basically approve the location of the shed as it stands.
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Oh, I thought Dave.
I didn't, I don't.
Okay.
I didn't hear that.
Well, Bob made the motion, Dave seconded it. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. And I said the planning board will send me something?
Yes, he says on his memo that he's going to.
Send it to you. Okay, all right. Um, and did I get the copy of that paper back?
I believe I gave it to you. Yes. Rachel? Oh, the property manager?
Yes. I just tried to keep every instance, please.
Good, okay, you, uh, they will, the board will sign this decision in October.
Okay.
Next month, and then it's a twenty day appeal period. And, uh, then I would, uh, uh, have the appeal period go to Tom Clark and get a certified copy of our decision.
Okay.
Uh, which will say that those can appeal. File that with the community's needs. And then, uh, that way we can get everything legal.
Okay. Uh, will I receive something just to let me know about all the timelines or should I write it down?
Well, you're gonna get a, you're gonna get a copy of the decision once it's signed.
Okay, so I'll get that, then I'll know it over to the clerk.
And in the decision, it gives a timeline.
Okay, perfect. Okay. Thank you very much, and I will get an electrical permit. Probably first, probably next week, saw my wife come down and go fill one out. Is that all right? I'll fill it out. She'll bring it in with a blank check.
Electrician to fill it out?
This guy.
Okay.
I can do that.
We'll check them out.
All right, yeah, you can look up all my, uh, my information. I just took the update for us. I'm glad I got my license in the mail. All right, thank you very much.
Okay, we've got a vote on the thirty seventh Cameron Street. Okay, I'm, do I hear the motion to close that here? Someone, so I have motions been made. Like Bob, the closing, Danny. Dave, the second. So, there it is. We have a decision that, uh, you all have a chance to read it.
Yep.
Case number seventeen over. That, uh, we heard last, uh, last month. My only, my only con, thing to comment about the decision is you talk like this? Talk like this? He's putting here all the requirements that required, uh, I think a variance, although it was a variance, but it's not a variance. I mean, he's got it here. You know, little enforcement provisions of the ordinance of by law would involve substantial hardship, financial otherwise. That's all part of it. Okay, that really doesn't need to be in there. But it's in there. I'll have to talk because I don't think that's, that's necessarily what we.
Do you want me to pick it up? You already signed it. You already signed it.
Okay, no, we, we, leave it in. I'll just have to talk and, you know. I really don't, really don't need that. But other than that, I didn't see anything wrong with it. That's all. So I would sign, I would sign that decision at the foot, so votes it. This nice stuff, this is yours. You want more paperwork? I have decided. I don't need any paperwork. I give it back to her. It's cool. Take it home.
She'll have mine too.
Piles up?
It piles up.
It piles up.
Then my life gets mad. What are you gonna do with this stuff? You need a motion or you also?
Mr. Chairman, a motion.
Uh, he has a motion to approve the decision. Some of motions been made to approve the decision is written.
Seconded.
Peter seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Paul. I think it's too deep. I didn't refer this to you literally for some, for some reason it doesn't look right.
Doesn't matter.
Office gets attached to that.
I don't know. You know how sometimes you, sometimes you start to cheese.
I know, that's what I can't do.
Yeah, I asked him and I said, doesn't look right to me either.
Oh, yes, um. Thank you, yes, I guess. I need to get my tickets, comments to talk about.
Okay, I'm gonna look it up. I have the video. It doesn't work. You know how some, sometimes you look at something.
All the time.
Even, you know, even if it's right.
Yeah, you never run it on still.
I make a motion that we adjourn?
We have something.
That's off the.
That's off the record.
Second.
Thank you. Took a long time. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.